Well, it is seven o'clock. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go ahead and uh go ahead and start call tonight's meeting to order. So for first part of the agenda, uh we will go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance if you would. If you guys can see that you see in your Zoom meeting, Pat Becker has an American flag up. And I will go ahead and start us off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty of this world. Thank you. All right. And then uh right before we go ahead and do the official uh official call here, I I do want to recognize that we got some special guests here on on the meeting here tonight. Uh we have our local Boy Scout troop uh has decided to join the meeting tonight. They are currently working on and and correct me if I'm if I get the wrong get this wrong here. Your citizenship of the or no citizenship of the community?
Correct.
All right, merit badge. Uh welcome, welcome, guys. Uh and uh we will hopefully uh you know, you'll learn something from uh from tonight. So thanks for joining. So we'll move on to uh the next is uh going on to look at the approval of tonight's agenda. Uh has council had a time had a chance to take a look at the agenda?
We have. Can we add the uh filling of the pools to the agenda somewhere?
Uh pools. Yeah, we can do that. Um we can. Let's put that down uh right underneath Public Works Department. So right in the department readouts, we'll put that right underneath Public Works since I assume that would be Pat, that'd be you and Zach that'd be talking about that?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other amendments or changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
All right, I have Pat with a motion to approve.
Second by Dan.
I have a second by Dan. And what we'll do is we'll go through a roll call vote. Pat?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Brent with a yes. So motion carries. The agenda is now approved. Onto the consent agenda. Anybody have any comments, questions on tonight's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda by Dan.
All right, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Dan.
I second that emotion by Jan.
All right, Jan with the second. I'll uh we'll go into roll call vote again. Pat?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Brent with a yes, consent agenda is approved. So now what I will do is I will go ahead and move on to our public hearing. So for tonight, uh we have a public hearing for the wellhead protection plan, part two. Uh what we'll do is I will make motion to uh to suspend our regular meeting and open up the public forum or open up the public hearing, sorry. All right, so onto the public hearing. Has anybody uh anybody on the phone have any comments or questions? Uh we'll we'll take public comment at this time for the wellhead protection uh wellhead protection part two.
All right, we'll have Karen speak about what wellhead protection part two is. So everybody kind of knows what it's about.
We will. I was just gonna move on to that part here. We're going to go through um this is the same plan that we reviewed last fall. Um but I will go ahead and uh if Karen, if you want, if you have any extra uh any extra comments you'd like to share?
Sure. Um well, you know, last fall, um I met, we had a public information meeting and we uh went over what the wellhead protection amendment would look like. And so we updated the drinking water supply management area um so that it was current with the most uh recent and most available information. So we knew now what the new wellhead protection area looks like, right? Um and then over the winter, um there were quite a few of us who met with uh by role resources. And then we amended the part two of the city's existing, I should say, uh the city of Eden Valley and Watkins existing wellhead protection plan. And um so we had some really good productive meetings. Um most of the wellhead protection area lies south of the city limits and outside of the city's jurisdiction. So what we did was uh we invited um folks from Meeker SWCD and Soil and Water um and uh planning and zoning, Meeker Planning and Zoning. And we discussed with them and some township folks. We had Vic from uh Forest Prairie Township um and discussed things that maybe the townships or the SWCD or Meeker County could do to assist the city of of Eden Valley and Watkins to help ensure that their the city's water supply would be protected from any potential contaminants that could occur. And they agreed to work with the feedlots. Um we also discussed the um manufacturer, um um correct me if I'm wrong, in 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 Inova, um the the dog food plant. So we talked about where they would be land applying some byproducts from that business. Uh we talked about um maybe some of the other land uses in the area and how they might contribute. We talked about um Highway fifty-five and the potential for all the road salt to eventually end up down in the city's drinking water supply. Uh we talked about what if there would be an emergency spill on fifty-five. So we had some communications with uh MINDOT. Um so we ended up um with a, I think, a very good updated wellhead protection plan for both cities. Um it looks a lot different than what the previous plan did, but um it's going to include um cooperation from a number of um outside local units of government in order to assist the city in in being able to uh ensure that the water supply uh doesn't become contaminated. So um this amendment will be good for the next ten years. Um and then year eight will meet, well, I probably won't be meeting, but um I think Zach will still be around and uh he'll be meeting with um whoever in eight years down the road and you'll take a look at the plan again and and see if it needs any updates at that point. So um does anyone have any questions about this amendment?
Uh looks like uh doesn't look like it.
Yeah, I think, you know, it wasn't that long ago that I talked to the council about what we were working on. And um I just really um as a representative from the Minnesota Department of Health, really want to commend both cities, um the township, um the council, the Water Commission, everyone that's uh worked on this wellhead protection plan for their time and their efforts um to ensure that both cities will have a well-protected um water supply in the future. And um you know, it it takes time out everybody's day and um but I just, you know, this is the second plan for both these cities. And you've been very um cooperative and you've done a great job implementing wellhead protection. And I just wanted to acknowledge those people that worked on this and and um just say thank you.
All right, thank you.
Steve or is Zach on? Do they have anything they want to add or if they have any questions? No, it looks like we're good to go.
All right, well, well, thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you joining tonight and walking us through that. All right, so we'll take one last uh one last round here. Anybody in the uh on the on the meeting here that has any questions at this time, uh we will take any public comment or questions. All right, so hearing none. Um we'll go ahead and move on to the next part here, closing out the public hearing. Uh will uh anybody want to make a motion to approve, you know, to uh adjourn the public hearing, council?
I make a motion to adjourn the public meeting. This is Jan.
All right, I got Jan with the motion to adjourn the public meeting, our public hearing. I will go ahead and make the second. All in favor, oh geez, I think I'm in my other meetings here. All right, uh roll call vote. Pat?
Yep.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Brent with a yes. So a public hearing is now officially closed. We'll move on to uh approval of resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, approval of the wellhead protection policy and plan two.
This is Pat Becker. I'll make the motion to uh accept or approve resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen.
All right, I have the motion to approve by Pat.
Second by Dan.
I have a second by Dan. Any last comments and further discussion? All right, we'll go with roll call vote. Pat?
Yep.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brent with a yes. Uh motion carries. The uh resolution twenty dash twenty dash sixteen, approval of the wellhead protection policy and plan two is now approved. We'll move on to next agenda, our next agenda item, twenty twenty-one improvement project. Uh the commencement with the surveying and design, the set of the date. Uh Kent, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear uh as far as the city's expectation on when uh they would like to start with the design on that. But you may recall early on, I believe it was a February council meeting, we talked about waiting until the intended use plan was published uh by PFA, usually late August. Um and if the city wished to continue to wait until that happens uh before we proceed. The reason I bring it up is the resolution doesn't say that necessarily. So just looking for clarification.
All right, so I know that we were uh kind of going back and forth on this a little bit um about when we would like to start the actual design on on that. And one one thing that we were thinking of is um if we started later in the later this year, you know, after um after the PFA announcements go out, you know, we know if we've got the, you know, if we've got the money to, you know, for this year to move forward. Um that was one of the one of the reasons that um you know, I was looking at uh, you know, waiting till later on to do that. Thoughts from rest of council?
If you go along with the, still go along with it, we're still not locked in, correct? We're just planning it out.
Correct. Um just just to lay out the options, if uh let's say council authorized, go ahead and proceed, you know, whenever uh we can get to it in the the summer rather than waiting. I guess the the in that in that situation, the city would be, you would see engineering invoices uh that you would need to cover until such time as the PFA funding uh became available, which would still be the case if you waited. And even until after the IUP is published. Um because the loan proceeds don't arrive, you know, immediately after that, there's there's processing and quicker work uh involved before the loan proceeds are available for the city. So I guess that's that's where it's at as far as a timing standpoint. It it wouldn't affect our ability to complete the design in time if we waited.
Kent, I'm looking at this memorandum that you that's in our packet about uh some possible stimulus funding for COVID nineteen. Which probably that you recommend design the project now rather than wait?
Yeah, um. That's hard to say, given that there hasn't been a whole lot of direction uh that we've seen uh as far as is stimulus funding. It's certainly being talked about, but we're not hearing any real definitive timelines or anything like that about what it might look like and when it might happen. So I mean, you certainly could proceed with it now. You could also choose to wait and see if that comes to fruition as well, similar to uh waiting to see if if um the project is in the fundable range on the PFA intended use plan.
If we would have you proceed now and uh and then and the PFA money comes later on, would we be in a better better position to get better bids from contractors? Could we be, could it be designed already? We could go out to bids earlier? Is that possible or not?
The potential is there, yeah. Um that we would be able to bid it earlier in the year.
Really, you're looking at you guys would do the work in July or we wait until the August timeline for PFA and then you would start the uh design phase in either late August or September?
Yeah.
If we get the PFA.
Correct. It's it's a matter of a month or two difference on on start date for us, really.
And then if we're not on the PFA this year, then the council would need to decide if we wait until then next year or how to proceed at that time.
Right. If if the IUP is published and this project for some reason is not in the fundable range, then we would look at tweaks we could make, um maybe additional work we could add that would cause the score to increase pulling the project into the fundable range. Um considering how successful you guys have been, uh particularly on the drinking water revolving fund side of things with the principal forgiveness grants, you've got the last two projects. I'd be surprised uh if you weren't fundable uh found in the fundable range. Best two projects have been.
Do we know, you know, based off of what's been going on with COVID nineteen, um if if there's if there's gonna be any changes to how they how they, you know, how should I put it, calculate the formula, you know, to fire, figure out what's in, what's gonna be in that fundable range or not?
Uh we haven't heard anything about that changing, no.
That might be something that we might want to check with our uh check with our local or state representatives. So. Yeah, I heard you talk about that. Let's, you know, that if we went through and let's say we weren't in the fundable range. Now, is there a if I understand correctly, that there might be a time period when that list comes out that we can make adjustments to pull that into the fundable range even after that after that list's been published? How does that work? If I'm I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what you're.
I think there may be opportunities immediately after that list is published to try to adjust the project, basically to get more points on on the rankings uh that they use. Um because they take all the projects that get submitted for funding and they rank them uh with various points for various improvements that are in each project. And at some point uh as they go down the list of rankings, the funding runs out. So that's kind of what I mean within the fundable range. Um so if the city was below that threshold, uh I believe there would be opportunities to adjust it. Uh if nothing else, there would at least uh be opportunities within the coming years. So you would get into the fundable range ideally uh for twenty twenty-two funding. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does. It does. I I just, the way the way that uh you know, way that I I was hearing it sounds like there was like a little bit of a grace, there was like a little bit of a period right afterwards to get ourselves pulled into an infundable range if, you know, if we didn't make the cut.
I don't know that I could say that for certain.
Okay.
But that's a guaranteed thing, no.
And any expenses that are incurred, engineering expenses in twenty twenty, even if the project went to twenty twenty-two, we still would include all of those invoices and those expenses?
Yes, the city is able to go back and reimburse themselves with uh the PFA funding once it's um delivered to the city, so to speak. Um you could go back and reimburse for invoices that are a year, two years prior to that, which we've done on, you know, we've done that on previous jobs too, so.
Okay. Council, thoughts?
Well, I guess I'm kind of looking at it as uh, you know, sewer and water perspective. We got some old lines in there that um every day goes by, they're just getting worse. Um and I just think for what we have, I think, I mean, I guess you could probably attest to that too, Kent. We probably stand a decent shot at that funding, I'm assuming, uh just by looking at the what the projects and what what we have to deal with there. Um I'd like to see it kind of move forward um just for that fact. I I think um I think we we stand a good shot and it needs to get done. Uh we we're kind of sitting there where um issues are gonna start to to come up soon, sooner than later. So I I'd kind of like to see it move forward from um that standpoint.
I can agree with Troy on that. We've been kind of putting this project back in the back burner for a few years already and it's getting high time to get it done. Um and I think we we would set fairly high on the PFA. Is there someone from that helps with the PFA grants or writing that that could talk to us or or Kent, is that something you guys do all the time or?
Yeah, we we talk with um the area representative, I guess we call them with the PFA. Cindy has to uh talk with this gal that is our contact in the region with PFA. So that's, we could put some feelers out, so to speak. Um I don't know if they'd be willing to commit obviously either way until that list is published. Like they could give you a good idea, I think. Like it's likely this could happen. It's probably about as strong of a statement we would get asking that question.
They might come back and say, well, maybe now it's not the right time to make him as some of the statement like that rather than say, yeah, go ahead.
PFA is generally pretty um supportive of cities' needs to complete infrastructure projects. Uh they understand that the need is out there.
Yeah, and I and I get that. No, and and I I think the, you know, the, you know, the the ones that manage and administer the P, you know, manage and manages and ministers PFA, um you know, I believe that, you know, they want to do what, you know, they want to make sure that these projects are getting funded and that. But my my only worry is is that, you know, uh you know, the state is dealing with almost a three billion dollar shortfall, you know, and and their funding. And I'm I'm trying to look at the bigger picture of like, what are they going to cut? Um and how that's going to not only affect, you know, funds like PFA, um but also other funds throughout the state, you know, local government aid, you know, uh other other grants and opportunities that, you know, we we go through. So I'm I'm trying to, I'm trying to think a little bit more broadly than than just going af, you know, just thinking about PFA, but just how, you know, we're going to have to look at the city's finances for the next six months, you know, to make, you know, as as we get a clearer picture of what the downfall is going to be or what the ramifications is gonna be for for the huge deficit that the state that the state is sitting at. I mean, financially as a city, I mean, we're we're sitting rock solid. I mean, we can, you know, we could, you know, we could make a decision either way tonight and and not have to worry about it, you know, for this year. But you know, when when twenty twenty-one comes around, you know, what's that year gonna look like, you know, you know, financially? Um so I and just, that's why I'm asking certain questions a certain way. Um just so, you know, so I I kind of get a get a broader sense of of things.
Understand what you're saying there, Brent. Um but also we got to kind of think of, the longer we push this out, if we do have an issue, that's us. We're we're gonna be on that hook to fix that. And that's just a Band-Aid until we actually get the job done correctly after that.
And I, yeah, I agree. I I definitely agree with that. So this is basically when when do we want to pull the trigger on on starting the design on this?
I guess I I'm at the point where if if it's like a month or two difference, I I like to see it go through, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it's really not gonna make that big of a difference a month or two. We're either way, we're gonna pay for it this year. I don't know that we should wait on any project design based on what may or may not happen in the next year.
Okay.
I mean, we have that every year, so.
Yeah. All right. Uh so rest of the council have any uh any other comments? All right, so I have on the table here uh two two paths to uh to motion on here. We got start the start the design uh for the twenty twenty twenty-one project in July or or right away um or wait till after the PFA announcement. Um so it sounds like from uh from council that we are, we are at the uh let's start in July or start right away. Um so I think that's what we'll make our, what we'll make our motion on here. So I will go ahead and make a motion that we start the uh design, uh design for the twenty twenty-one street project um and move forward from there. So motion made by me.
I'm second. Troy?
Second by Troy. And then we'll go into roll call vote. Pat?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Brent with a yes, motion carries. Uh Kent, we are approving that you move forward with design of the project.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, gotta pull my agenda back up here. All right, so we are on to boards and commissions report reports. Uh Darren, are you out there?
Yes, how's it going, guys?
It's going well, thank you.
Awesome. Um so zoning, we had a application for the funeral home. You know, obviously, guys, I'll know that that had a little bit of an issue. So that was approved by zoning, the zoning board, and we recommend that the council also approves that.
All right, everybody had a chance to take a look at the uh permit and uh permit information for the uh funeral home? All right, then I will go ahead and make a motion to approve site, approve the building site permit for the Dingman Funeral Home.
I second that motion, Jan.
All right, second by Jan. Uh roll call vote. Pat?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brent with a yes, and the motion carries. Uh site permit has been approved.
And then we also uh approved a shed for four thirty-three State Street. That's just more of information for you guys. That was small enough that does not need council's approval on. Um and then I did rental. Chris Greenus, I did her third inspection and three of her four properties passed. Um so I'll have to send a letter to her on the fourth one and go and inspect it a fourth time. Um and then I also inspected uh four sixty-three Sterns Avenue West. They had minor issues, nothing major. Um that's it, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Uh going back to the one, the one that you're having to go back uh for a fourth time, uh we are, we are charging them for the extra extra visit, right?
Correct. After the second one, there is a fee on up after the second one.
Okay. All right. Anybody have anything for for Darren?
I got a question for Darren and and the council. Um I talked to Darren a few times. Um as you all know, Assumption Church is um building their their building. They got the building permit, correct me if I'm wrong, Darren. Um I think it was end of June or July of uh two thousand nineteen.
Correct. We reviewed it uh at the end. Correct, we reviewed it at the end, in June last year.
June of last year, okay. And of course, now we're into the project, definitely not done yet, and the building permit is a year old. Darren mentioned that we need to basically buy another site permit for two hundred and some dollars. Is that really, really fair? Or all the legwork and stuff is done already on the first building permit?
You could say that, you could say that about the house that's down from City Hall too. And that's the reason we, one of the reasons we put that and enforce that now.
Right, and I was, we all voted for that, I know, I know. It's hard to change it. It, but you're seeing, you know, the council is not seeing any progress on the one just west of the City Hall. You definitely see in progress on the, the church building with the building permit. Is that different?
You know, I, I see where you're, what you're getting at there, Dan. But if we, if we go back to the way our, you know, the way that we've got our policies set up, that, you know, this almost runs into, you know, a equal application of our policies and ordinances. You know, technically, you know, with the, you know, the, the, you know, the building permit expiring, that would require the purchase of another one. I, I know, you know, I know, I know that that, you know, now let's come out and say it, I know that it, it sucks. You know, and it's already on a, you know, on a project that's already probably got really tight, tight budget on it. But I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to decide that we're gonna have, you know, equal, equal application of our policies and ordinances on this. I, I just, I just would not like to set, you know, the, the idea out there that there, you know, one project we hold, we hold to the line, you know, even though that technically they're, you know, they are not following, you know, not following the rules in an obvious case. Versus somebody that's, you know, that's, you know, or, or a project that's moving forward just happens to be, you know, months behind schedule according to the original timeline.
Yeah, I, I understand it too. It could definitely, it sucks. But we had a, as a council, we had to put this in place, I know, because of some people have been pushing the rules all the time and things like that, so.
Yeah, I think if we make a decision here, then people down the road are going to ask for the same.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
We'll get the information of Darren, we'll get it taken care of.
All right, yeah, sorry, sorry, Dan.
He's the question.
Yeah, no, no, it's worth asking. So, any, any other comments on that from council? Any other questions for Darren? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
All right, on to tonight's, tonight's bills, to tonight's, tonight's bills. Anybody have any questions on the bills?
Looks like we have.
Motion to pay the bills by Dan.
All right, I have a.
Machine and welding one in there.
There's a safety one, no.
I see it. It's about halfway down.
Yeah, there is one.
Okay, five seven.
And I make a motion to pay the bills except for Thiel and machine.
All right, yep, I see it there too. All right, got a motion, motion to approve all of them except for Thiel and machine?
Pat with a second.
Pat with a second. Roll call vote, Pat?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brent with a yes, bills are paid. I'll go ahead and make a motion to pay Thiel and machine.
Second by Troy.
Second by Troy. Roll call vote, Pat?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Upstein.
And Brent with a yes, motion carries, bill, you know, Thiel and machine is approved. All right, on to department readouts. Cindy?
Public forum is next, if there's anybody.
Yeah, I just kind of, I just kind of glazed right over that, didn't I? All right, anybody from the public forum have any, have anything for discuss, up for discussion? All right, hearing nothing, we'll go ahead and move on to department readouts. Now, Cindy, you're up.
Now I'm up. Just two things, I sent to you today an email of the May financials. That's the investments and the cash balance. I don't need any action, it's just an information. Right now, we have in our investments and with our cash, we have a total of two million, seven hundred and seventeen, hundred and nineteen, eighty-two. And hopefully, I'm hearing, June, we will get our tax, first of our tax. It's going to come three this summer rather than in normal two, June and July. So, that's a good deal. And we'll be doing that on a monthly basis. Again, we'll be back into that May, doing the financials. And then at the end of June, I will give you the six-month budget to actual. And having reviewed it, reviewed it, it looks good.
Have you had a chance to take a look at those numbers at all and how we're, how we're doing? Are we, are we on budget or under budget?
We are, for some, we are on budget. I told Chief Junker, he was just spot on with his. And, and I think Public Works is under budget because we had budgeted for an additional person. So, we'll be doing some budget amendment on that. But, yeah, we're coming in right on or right under budget, which is a good deal.
Excellent.
Yeah. Yeah, a second thing that I, I am looking to take Fri, this Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off, which puts Tuesday City Hall being closed. Unless anyone has big arguments or wants to come and help me clean garages.
Well, I told you, Cindy, if you, you, you know, you got, well, you got three days to publish that as a meeting. We can come over and, you know, come over on Tuesday and.
That's right. But that's all I have, and we're open now. People are able to come in to City Hall portion of it. The door is unlocked during the day, so.
All right, and then the, the audio equipment or the remodel of the council chambers. Do we have any, any update on that at all?
The week of the fifteenth, the larks will be in to close up the wall. And the audio people will be in, either at the end of that week. They don't need it with the drop ceiling. They're able to work through the ceiling for the speakers. And the electrician, if need be, can come in as well during that week or the following week. I'd like it done before the July council meeting, just that portion. We might not have it painted by them, but anticipating a in-person meeting in July. So, it'd be nice to have that cleaned up in there, but I think the construction portion will be done.
All right, excellent. All right, anything else, Cindy?
No, that'll do it.
All right, anybody have anything for Cindy?
No.
All right, then moving, moving on to Chief Junker.
How's everybody doing tonight? Monthly report, we have, we had a little hiccup with the printer. And so I didn't get a scan to you, but I'll just give you a quick overview of it. We had a total of a hundred and four contacts this month. Some of that being the vast majority, we did twenty-seven letters out for spring cleanup. And we also had thirty-three traffic stops and miscellaneous other stuff. So, it ended up being a hundred and four total contacts for the month. As far as the new squad, that's working out good. We should have our new computer in by the end of the week. And get the hiccups worked out on that, so we should be good on that. And other than that, we just been, things are picking up, but it's that time of year. So, and some stuff starting to open back up, which is good. So, I think people are tired of being cooped up, so. And that's, that's about all I got, unless you got questions. I'll scan and send this to you when I got availability for the scanner to get it to you.
Sounds good. All right, anybody have anything for Ernie? All right, then we'll move on to Zach.
Hey, how we doing tonight?
Good.
Um, Pat, if you want to join in on this too, the fire department is wondering about filling pools. They've had a couple requests, so.
Yeah, so Chad brought up, Chief Keighley brought up on Monday night that he's gotten about fourteen or fifteen calls in the last two weeks asking if the fire department fills pools. I know I've been asked at least four or five times from different people if the fire department fills pools. And I said at this time, we don't. I believe that's what Chief Keighley was saying as well. So, with that, we're kind of wondering if the city would like to offer that service, I guess. There are members down there that are willing to deliver the water. So, I don't think it's a, an issue of, of not being able to find people. I guess if we do approve this, that, that we don't use Zach and Mark as, as pool deliver, or water deliverers during business hours. If Zach wants to do that, off hours or on weekends with the other fire department members, that's fine. But I guess that's my two cents on that.
I did share with him after talking to, to the chief, I shared with both Pat and Zach a document that is used by another city that outlines and all, keep, the owners of the pool have to sign, which told the city not liable if something were to happen, if they ran over a garden or overfilled a pool and it flooded a backyard or something like that. And as well as the fees that would be involved for filling the pool, for the water for one. And that would go in the water department. And then a fee that would go into our fire department fund, the four-two-two O fire department fund fee.
I guess I should also add, one of the, the comments that was made Monday night was, we'll deliver water to residents within our fire district. But we won't like go to Haynesville or Richmond or Litchfield or Watkins or anything like that. Sounds like right now we've got those other departments coming into our fire district to deliver water to, for filling pools.
Yeah, that's a good point because the neighbor had Richmond come down and fill their pool and it seemed kind of strange.
So, insurance companies say about it, about.
No, it's just going to go there.
Delivering water, and is it going to get into a bigger can of worms? Say a farmer needs water into his manure pit, it's getting dry, he needs more liquid in it. We're going to haul water out and dump it in that. Where, where do you draw a line? Is this going to be for just pools or where do we draw a line on delivering water?
I think it's just for pools. That's, that's what, you know, that's what the form says for filling pools, not for filling anything else with water.
I know in the other city that filled Jan's neighbors, when that came to be, it was because other surrounding fire departments had said no. But they wouldn't, and because they didn't have the, they didn't have the firefighters who were available during the day to do that. And it would have to be based on availability of the fire department and then people who were willing to go and fill the pools. Regarding insurance, that's where the waiver came from, was that the waiver that's on that form was written by the attorney and shown to the insurance so that, that that's, we're not getting into something else. There were many requests for things to bring water to them for a variety of reasons. And the person there, the then assistant chief, I believe he's the chief now, you know, he said no. And he had the authority to say no, he wasn't going to do that, so. They kept it at just pools or in an emergency. I mean, we're not talking about that, but.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I think, you know, I mean, it's less about, you know, it, for me, it's less about, you know, water sales than it is about public relations. You know, we can, we have an opportunity to, you know, do something that, you know, do something for the community that would be, you know, looked upon, you know, in, in, in a positive aspect. You know, get the, you know, get the truck, you know, you get the tanker out there seeing, filling pools. You know, especially this, you know, especially with the summer with, you know, who knows when, when people will be able to go to beaches or go to, you know, you know, public swimming pools or splash pads or whatnot. So, I think we have an opportunity to, to help out in that regard. And, and I'll, I'll caveat that with, as, as long as, you know, we, we do our diligence that we're not going to put ourselves into, into a position that, you know, we make sure that in the form that gets signed by, you know, gets signed appropriately. So, you know, in case they backed the, banked, backed the tanker truck over, over, you know, their prized rose garden accidentally or, or, you know, run, accidentally runs over something or fills the pool up. And later on, because the pool isn't in the best shape, it splits open and, and drain, you know, you got, you know, three thousand gallons of water coming out at one, all at once, that they're not going to come back to the city and ask for damages.
Yeah, how, how tall are pools? You know, tanker could reach over maybe like a thirty-six inch high. Underneath that, just maybe forty inch high on a discharge. We got pools out there that are four or five feet high. Then how are we going to feel, how are we going to address that if somebody calls for water on that if we approve this here?
Well, it's looking at the, I was looking at the form here, and Pat, this is probably where you were about to go, is it looks like the first load is a hundred dollars. And then if they, if that doesn't do it, then they have to pay another fifty dollar base.
I'm talking about, talking about the height of the discharge on the tanker. There's no pump on the tanker. It's all, it's all drained gravity out of the tanker, so. I never measured the height of that spout, Pat, do you?
Yeah, I haven't either. But even at a, even if you have a five-foot high pool, if you go off that, that, not up the, the main discharge with the hose discharge, the truck is quite a bit higher than, than the pool is, so the majority of water is coming out of there. For the smaller pools, the shorter pools, you could, you know, assuming that you can back the truck up to it, you could use the tray discharge. But I guess you always got to be kind of careful with that so you don't knock their pool over, because the water does come out of there pretty fast.
I can see with Richmond, I don't know that they ever filled a pool without the hose.
Right, yeah, so I, I, I don't think there's going to be an issue unless you try to feel like my pool where it's like higher than the road. You know, if you run into a situation like that. But I, I think, I think that hose discharge is high enough that we can get the pool filled up.
Then oh, even my pool, there's, there'd be no way to get the tanker to dump into that one. It's about almost five feet high, so. And I guess, not, I'm not totally against this here, but just a couple of questions on, let's say we're filling a, a pool out by Cozy Corner. And there's a fire call comes in and the fire results south Manana. Look at that response time there, are we opening a can of worms? We only have one tanker. Are we opening a can of worms? Says mutually, I know that. So, this is something to think about.
I guess I'm, the way I look at it, if Richmond can drive all the way down Eaton Valley, or is willing to drive all the way in Valley, into Eaton Valley to drop off water, and they're not concerned about the risk of that. Um, I'm I'm thinking for the. Interest of public relations, I mean, I think we can. I don't know that, I mean, it could happen. I don't know or will. I don't know.
I just see a big liability if it does happen, but.
Yeah.
How often would it happen? I don't know.
So did we actually get rid of the second tanker already?
That's a pumper.
Oh, that's a pumper. Never mind. I'm sorry about that.
And no.
And no. Yeah, no, I I I I see what you're saying, Dan, um, you know, and and I'd I'd hate to be the one to say, well, what's the odds of that? Um, you know, we do gotta be cognizant of that and and maybe, maybe we gotta be a little bit, you know. Maybe we gotta put some parameters parameters around this and, you know, do we want them? You know, do we want a tanker way out by Cozy Corners? You know, filling up a pool. Now, I understand that Richmond will come, you know, they will deliver water all the way to Eden Valley here. Um, but, you know, if that's a concern, maybe we limit the radius of where they could go.
Who's just said earlier that it's the Eden Valley fire area. The fire area goes out north of Cozy Corners. It goes miles south of Manana, so we have a long, narrow fire area.
Yeah, it goes up around past uh on the north side of Rice Lake too, up past uh the old Twilight Acres.
Well, isn't this something that, oops.
Go ahead.
Isn't this something that the the fire chief can uh figure out with their crew, how far out they want to go?
It's up to the city council to fire departments, uh. Department or division of the of the city and the city council. Governance that, so.
Yeah.
Zach, at the meeting, did they talk about that at all?
Well, either, they kind of had said, yeah, the whole fire district, but if the council wants to just go with only filling pools in town, then. You know, just within the city limits, then, I mean, that's that's better than not filling any pools at all. As far as public relations wise.
Do we know?
They discuss the risk or what if there's a fire or any of those kinds of things? Were was that part of the discussion?
I don't recall that being part of the discussion.
I don't remember either.
And do we, do we know, do we have an idea of the people that have been calling, asking for pools, like where where? In the fire district that they reside in?
I'm not sure of that either.
I know the ones that I talked to are always out, so we probably wouldn't, you know, I mean. If we put it, if we put a mileage limit on it, I know the one was out by uh Squirrel Beach, which I know we, I I would probably say no to that one. The other one was out. Northwest of Eden Valley a little ways. And then there was one that was in town, a couple that were right in town.
One way of setting good PR, PR for the fire department on the ones in town is coming off of, coming off a. Have them rent a meter and come off a hydrant. And I've done that with my pool quite a few times over the years. Just pay so much for the use of the meter and pay so much for the. A gallon or a thousand gallons of water and.
I don't know that people know that that's available, Dan, because I didn't.
I don't know that we want to open that can of worms, that just anybody can have a meter and take water off of a fire hydrant. I'm not sure I could do it, but. I mean, that's opening a whole nother deal that you're telling people that.
Well, I think we're, I think we're the the biggest thing that people want. The fire department come fill a pool, say for instance, my pool and maybe even yours, Brent. I noticed you put yours up, but for my pool, it took uh. You know, if we add it all up, it took eight to ten hours to fill up the pool where even if we got one truck full of water, it would have. Cut that significantly, significantly down. So I think that's where people are coming from a little bit. This is just, they're not, they're not afraid to pay for the water. They just don't want to wait.
Yeah, you know, and and my pool is rated at that what, uh, three thousand three hundred and sixty some gallons, you know, so, you know. And that took about, yeah, that took about five, I mean, close to six hours to fill.
Yeah, mine's a fifty two hundred gallon pool.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I'm, I. It sounds like the discussion here is kind of like we're we're for it, but we're not entirely sure of what, you know, what kind of, if we want to put some some. Guardrails around it. Um, so I'd like to focus on that, you know, let's say we move, you know, I move forward with this. Do we want to put any restrictions on how far they can go? You know, because the Dan's point, you know, that 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 direct that direction, that directive needs to come from from the council. I mean, as a council, are we are we worried that if we have have the tanker out in one corner of the fire district and it needs to go over to the other? Other district, is that enough of a concern that we need to, you know, to decrease the the delivery radius?
I guess where I'm looking at it, if uh we get the verbiage put in there to protect ourselves if there's an issue. Um, I'd I'd say fill the pools. Just make sure the verbiage is is wrote in a way that we're protected as a city. And if we're gonna do, um, you know, Eden Valley area, um, filling pools, I think we should extend that service.
No, no, I I, yeah, I I I agree with that. Any other thoughts?
I think it's a good service. I agree with the guy.
All right. Anybody else last?
I'm good with it. Um, it, I mean, I'm also good if we want to put distance restrictions as well. I think Chad would be fine with that too. If he said, you know, we only go, you know, four miles out of the city limits of Eden Valley.
Well, do we? You know, not not, you know, considering that, you know, the the should, the size and the shape of our 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 district. Is there parts of our district that are harder to get to than than other parts?
Yeah, so if you, like I mentioned, uh, the north side of Rice Lake there, where you have to go up around past coat, uh, the old uh. Twilight Acres, that's a long way around because you, I mean, we we actually have the. Where the, where Rice Lake kind of across from uh. Um, Fisher's Resort across the lake there, kind of where that finger is up on the north side there. I mean, we've had fire calls out there and that takes a solid fifteen minutes to get out there.
Actually, to get at that area, we have to go in into Painsall Fire Area and then come back into Eden Valley's fire area. It's a long.
Some chain of lakes too, a little bit.
So, so maybe we should do, may, do we want to look at it more of more of a angle that? We don't want our tanker to be X number of minutes away. You know, so if it takes fifteen minutes to get to, you know, get to what you were just talking, the area where you were talking about there, Pat. Maybe we don't want it to go out and go, you maybe we, maybe we want to put the restriction out onto that and versus like, you know. It's just a straight shot twan down twenty-two down to the the most southern part of of the district, you know, south of Manana. You know, that's gonna be different than. You, am I, am I making any sense at all or or is?
Well, it's easier, easier to figure out miles than minutes.
Miles than minutes, okay.
Because if you go north out of town, it gets pretty curvy.
Okay.
What if we would use a pumper two instead of the tanker on the farther away ones? Then the tanker would still be at the hall. I don't know what size the pumper two is for a gallon wise.
Fifteen hundred, isn't it, Dan? Do you remember?
Upper two, I think it's a thousand, thousand or twelve hundred, I think.
Yeah.
It might be fifteen hundred, I don't remember anymore.
Yeah, I don't.
Just a, just an idea, I don't. As far as far as a far away from town ones, you know, that way the tanker's still in in the hall.
I think we're in the process of um possibly selling that pumper two.
Yeah, I'd almost hate to put, you know, uh, uh, unless, you know, unless it was an emergency. Now that I think about it, get putting that out on the road, you know, especially if we're trying to trying to sell it. Um, but no, I mean, that's a great idea, Zach. I, you know, I'm also looking at it for, if it's only got a capacity of a thousand gallons. Uh, I don't know too many pools that wouldn't need more than one, one load at that point.
That and if you use that, you have to definitely, you would have to restructure the the rates. If you gotta make four trips with water to do the same thing that uh the tanker can do in one.
Exactly.
I think we just leave pumper two out of it.
Okay.
All right, so then then for the tanker, so it sounds like we're narrowing in on on a number of miles. So for the the, you know, the fire members and and retired fire member, um, what's your thoughts on that?
Oh, if you just look at it going north, you go straight north out of Eden Valley to the. County Road forty-three, that junction out there is three miles. So that's getting out there quite a ways. So my thing is maybe a three mile radius if we do something like that.
Thoughts?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, um, I'd almost, I'm thinking about this a little bit. It would be kind of nice to be able to cover Brown's Lake a little bit. But, I mean, it's up to the council if you want to put that, if you want to put three mile restriction on it. I don't know what that what mileage you would have to get to get to the other side of Brown's Lake. You're probably looking at five miles at that point.
Yeah, yeah, I I'd almost want to say we'd we'd stick with, you know, I I think, I think what we could do is we could start with three. And and we can always make the adjustment from there. You know, if we, if we, if if this goes well, you know, at three and let's say, you know, let's say the people that are, you know, let's say they. Uh, the volunteers that are that are filling these pools come back and say, hey, I think we can, you know, we could go out another mile or two, then. Let's bring that back and let's discuss that.
And I think, well, there has to be an investigation done before the tanker drives all the way out there just to find out that. They can't even get to the pool. Um, you know, because there are those situations where. No matter how you hard you try, you're not gonna get to, you're not gonna get to the pool. So I think before, before the, before the person pays the fee, you know. Somebody needs to go out there or at least they needed to tell us where the pool is at in conjunction with their driveway if it's easy to get to or not.
You're right, you're right in that, Pat, because there's a lot of places we've gone to with with the fire department that you barely can get into their driveway. And or with the rescue squad, so there is a lot of areas that's got limited access, so.
Well, can we?
All the other city asked, can you get there in a semi? And if the person says no, but a pickup truck gets back there, then the answer to filling is no.
Yeah, I was just gonna go there, um, you know, that would be just a simple question. Can I, can we get, can we get back there? And then can we do, can we do it that if if they ask that question and let's say they do get out there and let's say they can't get through there? Do do we still, do we still charge them the base fee?
Sure. Especially if they said, oh, yes, anything can get back, get back here. We have all kinds of things that can get to our pool and then you get back there and, you know, the lawnmower can barely get back there, so.
I'm thinking more along, yeah, I I I agree. I'm I'm thinking more along the lines that, you know, they they don't. They underestimate the, you know, the the size, you know, the the resident underestimates how big and how heavy these tankers are. And and, you know.
Of a semi.
That's true.
We may not know.
All right, so so then we, yeah, so then we just make sure that that whoever calls, you know, whoever works with this, you know, works with the resident. Ask the question, can you get a semi back there? And then if they can't, then that, you know, then, you know, sorry, we can't, we won't be able to deliver to you. I mean, is that, is that fair?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I've got, uh, so I've got that we will under the precipice that they fill out the form. Uh, they get, they get asked that, you know, they get asked the question, can the, can the tanker get back there? Can a semi get get back there? And that we were going to, for for now, limit it to a three mile radius.
Correct. I mean, I look at the. Additional loads uh fee, you know, I guess I'm more concerned about the per thousand gallons part of it. The tanker is thirty-five hundred gallons, but we have, you know, if if we dump half the tanker on the second load. They have no way of knowing how many gallons of water they dumped. I mean, they can estimate.
You know, I think on the other one, most people, I mean, you guys rattled off what your pool size is. Very quickly, you said fifty-two hundred, you said thirty-nine, someone with an in-ground pool is probably at the thirty thousand. And people kind of know what theirs is and, you know, some of it you have to sort of trust that they're. Not telling you it's a two thousand gallon pool and on your third trip, you think that's probably not true. You know, then most people know the size of their pool.
Okay.
Especially when they learn it's nine dollars a thousand gallons.
So are we gonna collect the money upfront or after the work is done?
I would say, I would say collect it upfront.
In the other city, they bring the form with, the person signs it, hands them the cash or the check and they. Write the amount on there because they, they know it's ten thousand gallons they're gonna take or nine thousand, they're gonna take three trips. So they know how much that is. If you have a three thousand gallon tanker or whatever, so.
True.
Yeah, so we okay with pa- having them pay upfront once we, once the evaluation, you know, that initial evaluation is done? You know, before the water gets dumped?
I think, yeah, I think they can pay once the truck gets there. I don't think they need to go to the city hall to pay before we drive out there.
Yeah, but I I would just, yeah, I would just hate to, you know, get out there and we dump the water and then they're like, oh, you know what? My my husband's got the checkbook and he's at work.
Don't dump the water.
All right, all right, so it looks like, uh, you know, should we do a motion on that?
Are we good with the fee schedule before we move on?
I I'm gonna go based off of your guys' recommendations.
Is this what the other city charges Cindy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, then then I would say that we could just go right in line with that.
Yeah, I think if we're consistent with the other cities, then I'm fine with it.
All right, all right, anybody want to make the, do the motion?
Uh, this is Pat. I'll make the motion to uh approve that we. Uh, fill pools based on this form that they fill out, uh, no more than, well, right at the three mile mark. I can't remember what else was all part of that.
Uh, three mile mark, uh, pay before the water gets put into the pool.
Yep, pay upfront and the forms filled out so that we end signed, so we're, so we cover our bases.
Yep, all right, I have the motion by Pat. I will go ahead and second. Any further discussion? There, we'll go into a roll call vote. Pat?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Brent with a yes, motion carries. That is approved.
Oh, I think Cindy had another part of that. Are we going to make this effective immediately or?
You can certainly make it effective immediately as a, as a new fee, but. You can certainly make it effective immediately as a, as a new fee, but we'll bring it, we'll amend the actual fee schedule, um, at the next meeting.
Yeah.
But you can do it as a new fee, so. So if somebody calls tomorrow, that, the fire department can go ahead and, and.
Yep. Alright, so we'll go ahead and move on to.
I got a couple more things, Brent.
Oh, no, sorry, sorry, Zach.
Uh, park's coming along, but I just wanna remind everybody to, uh, stay off the equipment. It's not finalized yet. So if the snow fence is up, stay, stay off the equipment. So just don't want anybody to get hurt. Down at Brett's Park. And, uh, also we got new seating grass down there, so, um, stay on the sidewalks.
Zach, the other day we were talking about the, some of the playground equipment is getting rusty already.
Uh, just that, just that one that I, I've only seen one that, uh, was on the bottom. It looked like maybe the, it didn't get quite dipped all the way, um, but, uh, other than that, the rest of it looks, looks pretty good.
Some of the quality was not real good in parts of it?
Um.
Not all, I mean, all this part of it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the rest of it seems pretty, pretty sound.
Yeah.
For a couple pieces I've gone, but, um, I might see if I can get some touch-up paint for that one that does have some rust on it, just to try to prevent it and, uh, yeah, we'll go from there. That's all I have for tonight.
Alright, anybody have anything for Zach?
Zach, did you wanna talk about the, uh, the, uh, recycling shed?
Oh, yeah, the recycling shed is, is not, not for couches or mattresses or, teddy bears or any of that stuff. It's strictly, um, household appliances, uh, hot water heaters. Um, yeah, we've, we just hauled the load out last week that had, uh, a futon and a mattress and, some other unrecyclable stuff, so, um, don't want that to keep happening or that service is gonna have to go away, cause it costs money to bring it to the landfill and it, it costs the city money to have a guy take it there with our truck too, so. Yeah. That's going good. That's going good. We got, uh, yeah, just sticks and grass. That's all that, that's all that should go out. They're smaller than four inches in diameter, so that's going pretty good. I'm not seeing too much garbage out there, so.
So do you have the cameras back up?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Hey Zach?
Yeah.
Was that TV gone? I took care of that. Was that gone today?
Uh, I'll have to check. I didn't check it this morning.
He said he's gonna go get it out there last night or today, so let me know. Make sure that thing's gone. If not, let me know.
Yeah, no TVs, no TVs. Alrighty.
Alright, and anything else for Zach?
Oh, thanks, Zach.
Alright, thanks, Zach. Alright, so we'll move on to our next item here. We got Brook Street. So I received an email from, uh, from Mark Messman, superintendent of the, uh, school district here. Uh, and with the, just to ask if we would be interested in, uh, in, in changing the street layout by the school there, we're on, uh, Brooks, Brook Street. Um, I was going, and Mark's on the, on the meeting here with us. Sorry you had to wait so long, Mark. I didn't realize the meeting would take, uh, you know, go, that the discussions would go this far, so, um, anything you would like to add?
Yeah, no, no problem on the way. Just wasn't sure if I was on your agenda or public forum. But again, thank you Mayor Bengston and city council members, uh, for taking the opportunity to have a discussion with us. As you know, we, uh, demoed, uh, of the, uh, the residence at one eighty-five Co-Sart, uh, which is adjacent to, uh, an existing parking lot and north of the, uh, the large new gymnasium. And, uh, prior to, uh, covering that with any hard surface, uh, we had a discussion and, you know, noting that there are no, uh, residents or businesses that, uh, use that road to access their private property. Um, uh, just to, you know, share with the city and get some thoughts, uh, on the potential or possibility of, extending that parking out into, uh, uh, it would be, uh, Co-Sarts on the south and Brook Street on the east. And basically, uh, a one-way street along the gym and then going down Brook Street where the buses would park and, and the fire lane would stay open. Um, it would provide, uh, a lot more parking, uh, whether it's for school staff and students, uh, city events and celebrations. Um, but you know, then we, we just, uh, started talking about, you know, it would impact utilities. Obviously, if it gets in any major cost with underground utilities, uh, obviously that's not something we're interested in pursuing, but I just thought we'd, uh, run it past you before we cover it with asphalt.
Sure, sure. Thank you. Alright, um, Zach, um, have you had a chance to take a look at what's in, what's in the ground over in that area?
Um, so that, would you want to take that hydrant out of that corner, Mark?
Well, you know, uh, we're open. Uh, I guess we'd, we'd wanna find a cost on that first, because I'm sure you'd wanna keep it located somewhere in that corner for, uh, fire protection. Uh, I don't know what the exact specs are, but if it stayed in that location, we could do something with cement post or some kind of a landscape, uh, around that, if we wanted to keep that in place. Uh, again, it's just beginning conversations. We haven't given it a lot of thought, but, uh, if the city's open to it, we'd look into it. But if, you know, you're not interested, then, you know, we don't wanna put a whole lot of time into it.
I, I guess I'd like to see it stay there if, if at all possible, but, uh, otherwise that main goes back to, uh, uh, Meeker Stern Street there. So we'd, we'd wanna cap that. If you wanted to remove that hydrant, we'd wanna, you know, not have a dead end. That's what I'm saying for that water.
Yeah, and I guess I don't think we'd wanna remove it, um, obviously, you know, for the school and fire protection over there. You know, I think it would be fine to leave it there or just make sure that it's protected if it's in the, the corner of a parking lot somewhere.
Could it be moved to the north, uh, lot line? Uh, where the next house is to the north?
That'd be Fried, uh, Friedrich's house, um, down Brook Street. Yeah, I guess, uh, we could look at that, uh, find out what a cost on that would be. I don't know who would give me a cost. Would you know, Zach?
Um, I could, uh, probably have our buddy Kent take a look at how far over, you know, where, um, the cost estimate on how much it would be to move over to there.
Yeah.
Isn't the first question whether or not you're open to, um, giving up the street?
I would say half the street. I mean, there, there would still be a, there would still be a road, uh, I don't know how much it's even used right now, but obviously we'd wanna keep some of the street there, uh, to park our buses as well as, you know, fire lanes, um, and then really during the midday, obviously, you know, people could go through there, but, if we could even, you know, again, this is just beginning conversations, but, you know, if it were one-way, buses could come in, down Co-Sart, park along the curb, you know, uh, the bus door on the curb side. And then at the end, when you get to the, uh, north end of Brook Street where you get to the county line, we could potentially look at doing that a, uh, a two-lane, uh, turn where left lane goes, uh, to the west on the county line, right lane turns right on the county line. So, you know, people could still use that going one-way, but primarily at the beginning of the school day and end of the school day, it would be vacated by buses.
I guess, is there a reason why we wouldn't? Does anybody can think why we would not wanna do that? Maybe we should start it at that angle.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the, the, the question is, is that, you know, would we, would we entertain going into a, a broader discussion with, uh, with Mark and the school district on, on looking at, uh, some of the, some of the recommendations or some of the ideas that the school has? And, you know, I, I, I think it's always worthwhile to at least look at the options and, and see what, you know, what goes, you know, what, what could go down in that area? And then make, you know, then at that point, we would make a decision if we would, you know, if we would be willing to give up, um, sounds like half the street. Um, Kent, Zach, do you know, how wide is Co-Sart and Brooks right now? Is that, is that wider than a normal street?
I do not know that.
Okay.
Can't lie.
Uh, offhand, I don't. I'm trying to measure it right now on, uh.
Cause it seems like that's a wider street than, than normal.
Yeah, uh, according to the Beacon website, just measuring off the aerial photo, that's forty-two feet wide. Brooks is, which is pretty wide for a street.
Mm-hmm. And I think that was, uh, and, and, you know, it being wider already, you know, kinda gives, gives me the impression that, you know, if we went down, down to a, a one-way street and, you know, with some bu, you know, are you, Mark, are you looking at, you know, parallel parking the buses or some type of angled parking?
Yeah, I think if we would, uh, I, I think we would have enough room just to, just to run them all in there straight up along the curb. Right now, we kinda pull in there at an angle and we go up to, uh, uh, up to that door too, um, which is just on the corner of the school there, right at Co-Sart and Brooks. But even if we parked them parallel with the curb and just parked along Brooks and then along Co-Sart, along the gym there, uh, we'd probably have enough room to, to park them all. And again, uh, those buses are only in there for about fifteen minutes at the end of the day and then the streets open again.
Well, I think it's a lot safer for the kids if you're gonna have one-way traffic through there. That's my opinion.
I guess I'm open to ideas, if they wanna, you know, to give us ideas what they're looking at.
Yeah. Troy, Dan, you've been kinda, kinda quiet on this. You got any thoughts you would like to share?
Yeah, I was just thinking if we. Is, is forty-two feet wide. I think we can look at something there and, and, uh, work with the school somewhat on it. It's worthwhile looking at anyhow.
Is there a time, Mark?
No, uh, not really a timeline, but I guess we would like to get it paved before, you know, the school year. We're, we're hoping for a normal school year. I don't know if that's gonna happen to falling up, but, uh, you know, it would be nice to have asphalt on it, uh, before we fill it up. I mean, it wouldn't be the end of the world if we didn't, but, you know, maybe it's something Kent and Zach and I, we, uh, we, we do a little bit of the groundwork. Uh, Zach, uh, has been up the office before. We could even walk out there, take a look, do some measuring. Uh, you know, see what another lane of cars, uh, on the, on the, uh, would be the west side of Brooks and the north side of, Co-Sart, just see what another lane of cars would take up on the road and what that would leave us with and, uh, possibly look at some costs for relocating that hydrant, uh, over in the north corner there by, uh, Friedrich's property. If, uh, Kent and Zach are open to that and then, uh, one of them or all three of us could report to the city council.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. And get to go some time and take a look.
Troy, you were about to, about to say something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in, uh, you know, having the, the school come up with some ideas and, and bring it to the council. I think it's a, it's a good idea. We should look at it. And, um, Mark had a question about who moves hydrants. Uh, really good company out of Albertville, North Dell Construction could probably help you out.
Oh, there we go.
The forums say you never work in Eden Valley.
Yeah, exactly, um, so.
One thing with, uh, moving that hydrant, just thinking, if for the future, maybe none of us will be around anymore, but we move the hydrant down to Frederick's, uh, property line and then in the future, Mark, um, if Frederick's could looks at selling that house, it could be a more potential parking lot there also. And then that fire hydrant might be in the way again. If we move it, move it to their line. So this is something to think about.
True. You know, maybe that's something, uh, Kent and Zach, we could, uh, we could come up with a, a ideal location for it, you know, for the future, if, if and when, uh, the property does come for sale and if and when the district's in a financial position to purchase it.
And so I'm gonna have to ask the, I'm gonna have to ask the big, the big question here is that, um, far as like costs and cost sharing and that stuff, what's the, what's the school district's view on that? Or is this a project that would be funded by the, by the school or are you looking for some cost sharing?
Well, uh, no, we're not, we're not looking at cost sharing, uh, at this point. I think it's just, just a conversation right now and, uh, I could sit down with John Teal and as well and get some ideas from him, what it would take to kinda match up, uh, the parking lot with the existing street. Uh, do we put a curb around the entire thing or is it painted? Well, again, just beginning conversations.
Okay. Alright, yep, just, I just wanted to see where, you know, cause that, that question will come up eventually.
Sure. And Zach, you've got my contact information?
Uh, yeah, I got it on that, uh, on the agenda here for the city council, so.
Sure, so, uh, maybe tomorrow I'll reach out to you and we can, uh, take a walk over there and we can get in touch with Kent and see when he's available.
That sounds good.
Appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, and that brings us to other, uh, anybody on council have anything they would like to bring up? Alright, hearing none. We have upcoming meetings. We have July, uh, our next council meeting is July first. Uh, and that, hopefully, we will have that at city hall. Um, workshops for this month. Uh, do we want, do we have anything for a workshop?
Yes, I think it would be worth it just to get those two. We're gonna do a public hearing for, uh, TARP structure. We need to, uh, we need a workshop to get the verbiage in place and, uh, before we can hold the public hearing. So if you're open to it, that would be a good start.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, normally that, uh, we would have a workshop would be the, the third Wednesday of the month. So that would be on the seventeenth. Uh, council, any, any objections to scheduling workshop that night?
I'm fine with it, Stan.
Alright. Alright, uh, anybody else?
What date was that again?
Uh, it would be the seventeenth. Uh, we'll do it at, uh, you know, we'll do it at, uh, seven o'clock, like our, our normal meeting time. And then ask the question, we want this, we want this to be Zoom or we wanna do this in person?
I think workshop, we could probably do in person.
Yep. Cindy, you have any objections to that?
No, not at all.
Alright, let's, uh, yeah, let's do the seventeenth at seven o'clock at city hall. Uh, social distancing will be in effect. Uh, and, uh, we'll go from there. Alright, anything else on that? Alright, then we have, they have the workshop on the seventeenth at seven, at, uh, at seven PM at city hall. And then July first, uh, will be our regular council meeting. And that brings us to the end of the agenda. Um, before I close out the meeting here, for the, uh, for the Boy Scouts that are still on the, on the, the meeting here that are, that are still awake, um, like to ask you guys a question. You guys feel free to take yourselves off mute here. Um, so if you had the opportunity to run for office and, and hold a public office, what public office would you like to have? And you don't have to limit it to just, uh, you know, just local council. It could be any elected, elected, uh, body, whether it be school board, low, um, local govern, uh, city government, uh, county government, uh, state, federal. What would, what would you guys like to run for?
Federal.
State.
So you guys watched this meeting and guys all got scared off now, like, nope, not for me.
Too exciting for them.
Uh, well, you know, not every meeting is this, uh, like this. We, we tend to have, we tend to have some fun. Um, just so you guys know, if you guys, you know, if you guys do get, uh, interested or, or having a trouble, having problems, uh, falling asleep, we do have our, uh, our YouTube meetings online. Um, so if you wanted to take a look, um, we do have a city YouTube page, um, that we have, we had, do have meetings there. Uh, we do, uh, store meetings there. So, alright, with that being, and that being said, uh, well, at the end of the meeting, uh, may, anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Pat will make the motion to adjourn.
Alright, Pat with the motion to adjourn? We got a three-way tie here. We'll give it to Jan. Jan with the mo, is Jan with a second? Any further discussion? Alright. Pat?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brent with a yes? All right. Thank you, everybody. Thanks. Thanks scouts for, uh, for hanging in there with us.